I'll call this regular council meeting of the village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Shay Lynton.
Dear Father, thank you for another day here on this beautiful island. And Lord, I've just had this team of people on my mind all day, just kind of praying for them. And just the things that they have to talk about and deal with, Lord. I just pray your peace over them this evening and throughout the rest of the week, Lord, as they have other meetings and other conversations, Lord, it's just peace over them. And I pray your wisdom amongst them, Lord, as they discuss about important topics of currently of our island and the future of our island, Lord. You know, your word says, "Your kingdom come, your will be done." And that's my prayer for this island, Lord. So may your kingdom come and may your will be done on Graham and Anne as it is in heaven. Lord, again, I pray over this team here. Lord, bless them and give them the peace they need, Lord. We pray this all in your name, amen.
Thank you. Just a couple of things for opening remarks. First of all, I think it's appropriate to lead off with a thank you to the province of New Brunswick for extending the ferry schedule for the Graham and Anne five for an additional week to cover us through Thanksgiving weekend. We've been asking for additional trips for the Graham and Anne five for quite some time. And while it's a week, it's still one week more. So, and just to note, since 2021, we have actually added, the five is running four weeks more than it did that year. So that is a significant increase in service on that vessel. So I think we owe them a thanks for hearing us on this one. The other two big issues that have kind of been before us, certainly on social media, has been the water issue and the rural plan. I think we're going to talk about the rural plan. We need to add that to the agenda when we get to that point. But I think on both of those points, maybe what I'd like to say is that I think it's important that if people have concerns, that we have a conversation about it. It's really hard to debate things in the comments section of posts on Facebook, particularly when there seems to be, I think that people are very anxious and very worked up. And so I think it's always easier to have a more rational conversation when you could talk to someone directly versus having some of the conversations or some of the assertions that have been made on Facebook. So without going down any rabbit holes on that, I just would say to anyone who happens to be watching, if you have concerns, feel free to reach out to me, reach out to anybody who's sitting around the table. That's what we're here for, and we would certainly welcome a conversation versus some of the rhetoric that maybe is happening out there. So with that, I think we'll move on to the rest of the agenda, and I'd open it up for disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we will move on to adoption of the minutes from the regular council meeting of September the 8th. And those would have been in the packages for everybody. You heard the motion from Councilor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda, I have two things, if it's okay with the group, under Old Business at 9:02, I'd like to add the rural plan. And under 19:03, in closed session, we have financial funding opportunity that I'd like to talk about. It was a funding opportunity.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and add those two items to the, as you had recommended.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Turner. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We don't have an RCMP member here this evening, so we'll move on to number nine, which is Old Business, Seal Cove Bell Tower. Permission to sign the lease. CAO Rayner to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the renewal for the lease for the Bell Tower came up in the council meeting back in April. I've had several conversations with the management team that represents Bell, looking to get this signed. It's supposed to take effect on January 1, 2026. This puts us about halfway through the long-term lease agreement, which started in 2019, I believe it was, for 20 years. So they are recommending that the lease be increased from $1,400 to $1,540, which is fair market value.
Questions or comments?
Do we need a motion to give permission to sign the lease? Or do we? Okay, I make that motion.
You heard the motion from Councilor Turner. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. Councilor Boyd?
I had this conversation with the CAO via text message earlier in the week. And I think our hands are tied to an extent due to the long-term contract and the wording of said contract that basically hamstrings us to very small increases. But I really think they're getting a hell of a deal. And we could five, six, seven, 10 times that, I think, to put a little extra cash in the coffers. But this current lease kind of holds us to these very small incremental leases or increases. So for maybe next time.
Well, this is the first increase since 2019, so I guess we'll take that as a win. But you are right, it's, our hands are tied because in the lease, it does talk about fair market value according to other Bell Tower leases in the area. So once the contract comes up in 2029, we should be able to renegotiate.
Councilor Green?
Given some of the stories in the news lately about municipalities in the province trying to increase cell service and providing towers for providers to use, it seems like a reasonable thing to let them continue at this maybe below market, but at least we're not forcing their hand to make another decision we wouldn't want them to make.
Anyone else? Councilor Toll?
Is this the first time we've given them an increase? Or was that happening yearly? Or is there some kind of plan, like can we get it raised yearly or by yearly? Or do they decide?
It comes up for renewal every five years.
Every five years?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? One nay? Motion carried. All right. 9.2 is the rural plan. So several of you were out last Monday. We had the information sessions in the afternoon and in the evening. The afternoon was not highly attended, but the evening session, there were a few more people here, and it extended on past our eight o'clock stop. But one of the things, I think, as we got going further into the session, there seemed to be more tangible questions and more seeking of information, will be how well worth that. But by that point, we were after eight o'clock, and everybody was sort of, I think, burned out maybe from the conversation. And we felt that it might be, or there seemed to be a feeling from the people that were here, without putting words in their mouth, that perhaps another information session where we focus on specific tangible things within the rural plan, tangible questions that are directly related to things that are in there, to have one more session to give people an opportunity to address some of those things. In so doing, it would be prudent, I think, to postpone the public hearing that we have on Wednesday night, just as a matter of course, because I think it's better to get the information out before we have the public hearing, was what the conversation was. Obviously, that would take a decision of council, so that's why it's on the agenda this evening. So I don't know if anybody who was here Monday has anything they'd like to add, or if I've articulated that fairly from what the conversation was, but I'll open the floor up for discussion and viewpoints on what the conversation was. Councilor Boyd?
Yeah, I think you're bang on, really. It was a good session. There was three or four times more people in the second session. And I think once, we got about the first hour in, because it was a little confusing with the two maps, because we had the floodplain map, and then we had the mixed-use map, and they were both yellow, and there was a lot of, a little bit of confusion, I won't say a lot, a little bit of confusion there. But I think we made that turn in the 7:30, 8:00 range to actual tangible, like, okay, this is my property, how does it affect me? Can I still do this? And, you know, Xander was pulling up properties, and yes, you can do this, there's no. So I do think, I do think it was well worthwhile, and I would like to see us do, you know, another day, or even two or three more. I have absolutely no trouble with pushing the hearing of objections back. There is, you know, we are under, we're not under a huge time crunch, because we do have some time, but it's not something we can also just leave and not make any progress on. But we don't, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow. And I think, at least I feel, it was a very positive session. And if we can continue to have those sessions with the community, hear their concerns, hear their suggestions, I mean, I know there was some stuff that I hadn't even thought of that some different community members brought up that night. So I would certainly be fine with moving the hearing of objections even the first year, even into the spring. And we'd of course have to check with Xander, see what his schedule's like for coming down and doing more sessions, but I'm very okay with pushing it back.
Councilor Sturgeon, did I see you lean forward? And I see Councilor Green also leaning forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I, I'd like to know what the difference is between having what we had, you said before, a public session, and what's we hoped to do Wednesday night. I mean, because they both seem to be chances for people to have their say.
The information session is more interactive, and so it's a little less formal. You can come in. You didn't necessarily have to be here for the entire thing, not that you'd have to be here for the public hearing either. But it's an opportunity to learn more and get specific questions that you have about the rural plan, to give people a chance to understand what there is in there, because it is very dense, and there is a lot of information in there to understand reading it yourself. The public hearing is a more formal, structured process where it's, it's a little bit like our open session in that we can't respond. It's not a point to answer questions. It's simply a point to, I don't like section A, B, C in the plan because of XYZ, this is my suggestion, or this is what I would like to see changed. It's a bit more formal and structured versus the interactive thing that we did Monday and that we'd like to do again. Does that make sense?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Councilor Green?
Yeah, I agree with having more opportunity for people to get up to speed on what's going on. My only concern with canceling Wednesday at such short notice is that it, can anybody that was making an effort to get here, planning on being here Wednesday night, to have their opportunity to address us? If they might, you know, if we can tell them in time so they don't come, or some may be from off-island, I mean, a local person say, well, it's going to be two weeks, I'll go back in two weeks, it's no big deal. But I worry that because it's been advertised and it's out there, that two days isn't really much of a notice to cancel it.
I would suggest if we sent a void, I think that would get most people who have property here, even those on the mainland, as a notification. I don't know if that's okay with the rest of the group. So I think it would be good to have a motion if we're going to postpone the public hearing. Sorry, Councilor Turner, I didn't see anything forward.
Right. I agree that we should have another session, but I would like to not see it put too far off, because it's like, while this is on the surface, I'd like to see us be able to continue some of what has been talked about, rather than have, you know, start all over again, and people saying, what was it I wasn't happy about, or how was that going to affect me? So I would like to see, I don't think there's a big rush on the whole wrap it up thing, but I would like to see that second meeting fairly soon.
We talked about it briefly with Xander before he left, and he had some dates that he wasn't available. So I think maybe tomorrow morning, if we proceed with this, reach out to him and get something on the calendar as soon as we can. That's fair. Is there anybody else before I, sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead there. I do think it would be good to have a motion to postpone the public hearing, just so it's a formal decision of council.
I will make the motion, Mayor Morris, to postpone the public hearing of objections to a date to be determined, to allow for more public engagement sessions with council, the residents Graham and Anne, and the RSC.
You heard the motion from Councilor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Greenlaw. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So that brings us to the 10-minute open session. If anybody wishes to speak, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one, we will move ahead to item number 13. 13-1 is a letter from the premier on ferry tolls, and I'm just going to haul it up here, so chat amongst yourselves for a minute. So, I got it. Thanks. So when the announcement was made back in July, at the end of July, that the tolls were coming off the inter-provincial ferries, we wrote to the premier and to the Minister of Transportation, just asking for equitable treatment, even though we were not a federally-funded ferry. So we received a response from the premier, which I will share. It says, "Mayor Morris, thank you for your email regarding ferry service between Graham and Anne and the mainland. I appreciate you taking the time to share the concerns of residents and businesses and the impacts you've described on the seafood and tourism sectors, as well as the overall cost burden for the community. I understand the comparisons you have drawn to other federally-supported marine transportation links and recent federal funding announcements. As you note, the Graham and Anne ferry is a vital connection for both residents and the movement of goods with no alternate land route available. Since your letter was received, the Honorable Chuck Shaysong, Minister of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, and I have both had the opportunity to visit Graham and Anne and discuss these issues directly with you and community members. While there have been no commitments or formal discussions to date regarding changes to the current fare structure, we understand the concerns raised and will take this request into consideration. Any potential adjustments would require careful review of the financial implications for the province and discussion with relevant partners, including the federal government. We are also exploring the need for more capacity on the Graham and Anne ferry service, as you and I discussed, to respond to your growing population and economic activity, as well as the state of the existing ferries. We will continue to explore approaches that support reliable and sustainable ferry service for Graham and Anne, and will keep you informed as work progresses, with gratitude, Susan Holt, premier." I just wanted that on the record so that anybody watching may be aware that we are trying to do something, or have at least tried to address it. Any questions or comments on that letter? Hearing none. The next item of correspondence is a memo from the Honorable Aaron Kennedy, Minister of Local Government. I am not going to read the whole thing because it's in your package, but I wanted to draw attention to, is that, I'll read the first paragraph. "Government has commissioned an independent review of the regional services delivery model. The purpose of the review is to conduct an in-depth and objective analysis of the Regional Service Commission, RSC, and rural district models, with the goal of providing evidence-based recommendations to support stronger outcomes for regional collaboration and service delivery across New Brunswick. And so in the coming weeks, the consultants will begin reaching out to partners to begin gathering insights and feedback. The goal is to capture diverse perspectives. You will play an important role in shaping the review and its findings. I encourage all partners..." Oh, sorry, I just hit something on my iPad. "I encourage all partners to share open, honest, and constructive input to help ensure comprehensive and balanced outcomes and approaches." So I would suggest we reach out to the contacts that are given and ask that we meet with the consultant when they start the process, if that's okay with the group. Any questions or comments on that one? Okay. 14-1, New Business, it's Teladoc, a letter of request for continuation of the Teladoc services offered at the Graham and Anne Hospital. So a week and a half, two weeks ago, the president of Horizon Health was here on the island. We had to sit down with her and some of her staff, and one of the things that we talked about was the new Teladoc service that they are piloting up at the Graham and Anne Hospital. It has had an incredibly positive response rate, both from patients and also from the staff at the hospital, like upwards of 95, 98% satisfaction. So it's, if anybody hasn't been there or aren't familiar with it, it was designed for rural hospitals, I think started in Newfoundland. And basically, after hours, there is an emergency doctor who is on call, who they connect to via a computer, they have specialized equipment. So if you have an earache, they can actually look in your ear, they can write prescriptions, they can requisition x-rays, whatever. And a lot of times, it means that the doctor who's on call doesn't have to come in for maybe non-urgent cases, but those patients still get seen that evening. And for urgent cases, it's another assistance, it's a backup for the doctors and the nurses who are dealing with those situations. It seems to be really designed for rural hospitals like ours, that maybe don't have as large a staff or as much equipment as they do in larger places. So we had expressed our satisfaction, happiness with how the project is going, and so I would suggest that we write a letter of support to the Minister of Health to continue that for the Graham and Anne Hospital. Questions or comments? Councilor Greenlaw?
I had an opportunity to use the Teladoc services at the hospital, and they were, they were really, really great. It was after hours, two nurses on staff. They didn't have to bring in one of the doctors to see me, and I was in and out of there within 25 minutes. Like, it was a really, really well-provided service.
Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion to send the letter?
I would make a motion to send out that letter.
Heard the motion from Councilor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Boyd. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-2 is UMMB, Letter Support Regarding the Property Tax Assessment Freeze. I'm going to ask Councilor Boyd to speak to that one, because he's been our UMMB rep, and he knows much more about it than I do.
Okay, just before I get to that, I just wanted to do a quick UMMB update, just to let everybody know that the resolution that went to the AGM from our municipality passed with unanimous, passed unanimously. So that will go in the slate for advocacy for the staff to start up, nagging the provincial government for expanding eligibility under the Small Business Investor Tax to increase supply of affordable housing. So yeah, yes. Also, for those that don't know, our mayor was awarded the Art Slip Municipal Leader of the Year Award. And for anybody that knows Art Slip, as Counselor Sturgeon can attest, to win an award with his name on it really, really means something in the provincial community, for confident and community-minded focus, and focused on not only making your own municipality better, but, you know, rising tide floats all boats in helping the province look better. So a quick congratulations to our mayor. It was, it was really cool to be there and present her onstage and get to see all the pomp and circumstance that went on with it. So congratulations, Mayor Morris, and keep up the good work. It was a little bit bittersweet for me, because it was my last AGM as a board and executive member with UMMB. I've taken a little step back there to be more present here when I am here. So one thing off the list, but we will still be represented well, because I nagbonny enough to put a name forward for this own rep for UMMB as well. So we will still be represented well at the table. And as far as the property tax assessment freeze, we've all had it in our package, but essentially, we have a form letter here from the association. We've called on all the municipalities in the province, all member municipalities, which is 70, to stamp these. So it's, you know, you've got your naming municipality, what the, you know, dollars and cents and percentage is, hardship that's causing us with the assessment freezes. So basically asking the province to help us out with it and give us more money while they're freezing everything out. So I guess we just, I would make a motion that our mayor fills this out and sends it in, along with the other mayors in the province, to support this going forward.
Heard the motion. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sturgeon. Question.
Madam Mayor, just comment more or anything else? Once again, as I have before, but certainly want to, before everybody, congratulations, because it is a great warning for a great man who had provincial vision, what municipalities can do. And I also would like to thank Counselor Boyd for his time of service. As you all know, I have been there myself, and you've had the privilege of working with the greatest the province has to offer. Madam Mayor, that is now your privilege in the future, and I'm sure that things will be in great hands. And that's all I want to say in my regards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I would like to thank Counselor Boyd for the nomination. It was, I was very honored, but quite surprised when I found out. So it's not often I'm made speechless, as you all know, but that one certainly did it for a few minutes. So moving on to 14-3. You have something to say to me down there at the end of the table? Okay. 14-3 is Canada Post. Many people would have seen the announcement this past week that the Minister of Public Services and Procurement Canada has lifted the moratorium on closing postal outlets. They've not given any indication what outlets they may be looking at closing. There's been some wording from Canada Post that they were looking more at some of the suburban ones versus rural, but I think, given the fact that the moratorium is lifted, I thought it might be appropriate to write to the Minister of Public Services and Procurement Canada, just saying that we need to maintain postal, a postal outlet on Graham and Anne in some form. So questions or comments? Councilor Turner?
The moratorium, I think, only applied to rural post offices. So if they've lifted that, then obviously they're not solely thinking of suburban. It's been in place for 31 years, so it's quite something for them to just ditch it.
So are we okay with sending a letter? Councilor Green?
I move that we write a letter to Canada Post stressing the importance of post office remaining on Graham and Anne.
Heard the motion from Councilor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. Counselor Sturgeon?
Yes, I don't mean to be picky, but I thought I heard Counselor Green say Canada Post, and really, we're looking for Minister of Public Services and Procurement. I just want to clarify that. Obviously, Canada Post wants to keep things going.
Obviously?
Yeah.
I don't think that's obvious.
No, but like, I would like, the workers would like to keep it going, I guess, basically, kind of thing, yes.
kind of thing, yes.
Amendment?
Yes, so, okay, thank you. Anyway, it's the minister that's want to clarify in that regards, yeah.
You're okay with that, Counselor Green?
Yeah.
Send it to everybody. And I'm assuming we'll CC our Member of Parliament as well, just because I know you guys talked with him about that when he was here back at the end of June, correct? All right, any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Moves us up to bylaws, composition and remuneration bylaw. So, just a little preface to this. We had talked about this back in the spring, about looking at the pay scale for council, just to bring it more in line with current times. For anybody who is wondering, the bylaw that sets our honorarium and our meeting rate was passed in 1996, and those amounts have not been adjusted since then. So, at the 30-year mark, it seemed appropriate to at least have a look and see where we Recognizing that, we reached out to an HR firm, simply because for us to choose what we're going to pay ourselves after that long a period felt like it had an inherent conflict of interest to some degree, and we wanted to make sure that we were being fair to the village and fair to whoever's sitting at the council table in the future. So, with that, we had recommendations back from the HR firm. Those are reflected in the draft bylaw that is circulated, that is in front of everybody for discussion. So, I'll open the floor up, just in case there is some conversation around this, and see what we want to do with this next. Counselor Boyd?
Just one change that I see, as we changed the composition bylaw two years ago, and this currently reads a mayor, deputy mayor, and eight counselors, which it should read a mayor, deputy mayor, and seven counselors.
We're eight.
I know, but deputy mayor is counselor, correct?
So, that'd be?
It's, yes, it, we went from nine total down to eight total, seven counselors plus the deputy mayor.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, eight counselors, and one of them becomes deputy mayor.
Yes.
Currently, we're shortening. Currently, due to resignation, we're running at eight counselors, but historically, we've been at nine. I really don't have an issue with that, just that if we change it, we are changing the composition of council by one member.
We had, we had passed the bylaw, though, that, for the next election. Yeah, two years ago.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry?
Nope. Okay, so, we can make that change. Is there anything else in here? Counselor Turner?
On Section 3C, it says an extra meeting fee allowance of $7,500.
That is quite, that is quite the generous jump there, yes. Apparently, I missed a period in there, so we will insert that rather important decimal. Anything else in here? And I apologize for my lateness in getting this recirculated to everybody last week, but. So, I guess at this point, if it's the wishes of the group, we can do first reading, we can put it on the agenda for first reading next month. I'm not sure what the group wishes to do at this point, so I'm opening the floor up for that. Counselor Sturgeon?
If there is no objections, I can't see any reason why we couldn't do it this evening.
Okay.
And, because it's not terribly long.
No.
It's not pages long talking, and then, if we can.
Just have a question about the 50-meeting cap. Is that typical? Because we go over 50 meetings sometimes. I don't know if that's something that wants to be talked about. Fifty?
We just upped the.
Yeah, we did.
From 30.
It goes 50 now, so that seems to be pretty good, I believe, so.
Okay.
So, I don't mind reading it, Madam Mayor, if that's, whatever the procedure is.
Counselor Green, Counselor Greenlaw?
I just wondered if there was bylaw number associated with it.
Do you have a bylaw number? Hang on, we will, because we have the bylaw number from the.
57.25?
Yep. 57.
25.
25, thank you.
Okay. All right, you're up. I'm not going to fight somebody to say it, because she knows, I can't say the R word.
Nope, I didn't want to step, I didn't want to step on Counselor Greenlaw's toes. So, Madam Mayor, I move for passing of bylaw number 57.25, a bylaw of the municipality of Graham and Anne, respecting the composition of the council and the remuneration of the mayor and counselors. The council of the municipality of Graham and Anne duly assembled hereby enacts as follows: Composition. The council consists of a mayor, a deputy mayor, eight counselors. Remuneration?
Seven counselors.
And seven, yes, thank you. And seven counselors. Remuneration. The remuneration of the mayor shall be as follows: As of January 1, 2026, an honorarium of $8,750 per year payable monthly, provided that the mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the mayor is absent for more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meetings he/she does attend. As of January 1, 2028, an honorarium of $13,500 per year payable monthly, provided that the mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the mayor is absent for more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meetings he/she does attend. An extra meeting allowance of $125 per meeting payable quarterly to a maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular meetings per year. The remuneration of the deputy mayor shall be as follows. As of January 1, 2026, an honorarium of $5,500 per year payable monthly, provided that the deputy mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the deputy mayor is absent for more than 10 of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meeting he/she does attend. As of January 1, 2028, an honorarium of $8,500 per year payable monthly, provided that the deputy mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the deputy mayor is absent for, for more than 10 of the 12 regular council meetings.
Two of the 12.
Okay, for two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meetings he/she does attend. An extra meeting fee of $75 per meeting payable quarterly to a maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular meetings per year. The remuneration of each counselor shall be as follows. As of January 1, 2026, an honorarium of $3,250 per year payable monthly, provided that the counselor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the counselor is absent for more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of meetings he/she does attend. As of January 1, 2028, an honorarium of $5,000 per year payable monthly, provided that the counselor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. In the event that the counselor is absent for more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his/her honorarium according to the percentage of meetings he/she does attend. An extra meeting fee allowance of $75 per meeting payable quarterly to a maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular meetings per year. Bylaw number 57-22, a bylaw of the village of Graham and Anne respecting the composition of the council and remuneration of the mayor and councils is hereby repealed. This bylaw comes into force on the first day of January 2026.
Thank you, Counselor Sturgeon. So, that was a motion. Do we have a seconder for the first reading? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. I have one thing, which I realized as you were reading it. One of the changes that I had made was that I changed, for the honorarium, I changed that to monthly, but I'm wondering if a meeting should also be monthly instead of quarterly as well, just to keep them in line. But that's up to the group, it works either way. We can leave that for second reading, or leave it as is. Hearing no comments, we'll let that ride.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
You can do a second reading by title only tonight.
We can do second reading by title only tonight, the CAO says.
As long as they're 21 days before third reading.
Someone would like to make that motion?
I don't mind doing it again, if that's what the group's wishes.
It's just the title.
It's the title. Yeah. Madam Mayor, make a motion to, for the second reading of bylaw number 57.25, a bylaw of the municipality of Graham and Anne respecting the composition of the council and the remuneration of the mayor and counselors. The council of the municipality of Graham and Anne duly assembled hereby enacts as follows.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Tole. Question? Counselor Green?
Are we going to have an opportunity to discuss this in depth a bit more? As I mentioned in committee, I really, the change, starting this in January, I'd be a lot more comfortable if it started after the next municipal election, personally, and I'd like an opportunity to bend an ear on that. But if that's not the will of council, then that's not the will of council.
We can certainly have another conversation about that, if that's the wishes of the group. We can still make changes to it after, between second and third reading, if there is a willingness to do so. So, I would suggest we continue with the motion that's on the floor, and maybe we can schedule a conversation around that, maybe at the next committee of the whole or the next council meeting, if that's the wishes of the group. Is that fair? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay, 17-1 is approval to pay the following invoices from the General Operating Fund: Approach Navigation Systems for the Airport Assessment Trip, $2,300. Dutchman Contracting through DTI Trucking, $21,283.25. Emerge Beers Neil, the, for the 2024 audit, $11,212.50. And Home Hardware, the September Statement, $1,842.49.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to pay the following invoices of the General Operating Fund?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? Counselor Boyd?
Just the Dutchman one, for the DTI trucking.
It's all the salt they brought.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund, Lindsay Construction Progress Claim Number 12, $102,283.77.
Make a motion to pay this out of the General Capital Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Green. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-1 is transfers. I'm looking for a motion to transfer $95,754.2 from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund. Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Closed session, we have three items to discuss. 19-1 is personnel, the PAC member term. 19-2, it's synergy for a land strategy approval. And 19-3, financial, the funding opportunity.
Make a motion to move into closed session.
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I will second.
Seconded by Counselor Tole. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I recall this regular council meeting in the village of Graham and Anne order, we were in closed session to talk about three things. The first was a personnel, a PAC member term.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Tam Greeley to replace the recently resigned member from the PAC, and the term will expire in January of 2026.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-2, was synergy the land strategy approval?
Yeah, Mayor Morris, I would make a motion that council accept the strategy for land acquisition documented that was presented to us by synergy.
Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And 19-3, financial, was a funding opportunity. Counselor Boyd?
I would make a motion that the CAO proceed with a funding opportunity for feasibility study for municipal land development.
Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Tole. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting in the village of Graham and Anne will be here on November 3, 2025, at 7:30 PM.
Make a motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.